They're working through all the troubleshooting back there, but I'm preparing for the systems.
Reporting.
Like to call this special meeting of the Finance Commission to order. It is noon 12 and it is six eighteen. Stephanie, will you please call roll?
Chair Giuliani.
Here.
Vice Chair Rossi.
Here.
Commissioner Quaid. Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Elsner. Commissioner Finley.
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
Thank you very much. We are going to be having public comment and as we did last meeting, public, all comments from the public will be limited to this period. So if you have signed in, please call people forward. Are there any hands raised online, Stephanie? Let's start with that first.
We do not have any hands raised online.
Okay. And has anyone submitted a request to speak?
Yes.
Perfect.
Mr. Better.
My sister and I discovered something about five years ago. My parents, San Franciscans and FDR Democrats were in favor of something when they couldn't conceive two children. And they found in artificial insemination, a pioneer in San Francisco, Dr. Heyman. And lo and behold, my DNA blood father is named Winston Norman. An important name. And he graduated from South Pasadena, San Marino High in nineteen twenty-five. Stanford in twenty-nine. My daughter in two thousand and five. History, thought about it. I love it. I love to study it. It's rarely the past dead. The past isn't even past. There's an opportunity to create history in this community. It's happening right now. We're seeing things that were assumed to be done a year ago or two. I know I'm the villain for many people. That was useful, but that was the way it was. The way to rebuild an organization is a number of votes that are done on public record that were result from public discussion. This community has a problem with secret things going on, and it's been proven again after two years that there's a lot of secrecy. I encourage you with everything I have as a South Pasadena. Everything I have that I've given. And the people I love and value here that have said, thank you for doing the work. Thank God for Sheila Rossi. She's a spreadsheet animal. And whether you think she's a friend of mine or not, doesn't matter. Have you looked at her work? Voting. That's how you get it back. It's one by one. There are several itemized things that need to be done in front of you on another topic that I can't speak of. And this is your opportunity. One by one votes. Endembe the gods that would suggest that public policy is best accomplished on a timeline that ends with a fiscal year. It defies what is beautiful in truth and reason in the United States Constitution and my ability to stand right before you and tell you. I'm glad to be part of it with you. I truly am.
Has anyone else signed up for public comment?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Like to begin our agenda. Deputy City Manager, would you like to kick us off, please?
Good evening, Finance Commission. Tom Nika Magridian, Deputy City Manager. We appreciate you making yourselves available for a special meeting tonight to further the discussion and review of the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four draft proposed budget document. And thank you, Chair, for allowing me a few minutes to kick us off in sharing our story and how we got to this, to this point today. As you know, over the last two years, we have made significant strides across the agency. And none more apparent than in the Finance Department. We have prepared and presented timely documents, completed and presented a department operational assessment, made commitments for continued progress, delivered a timely mid-year budget in mid-March, and embarked on an involved and collaborative zero-based budget process. At mid-year, we discussed the needs for additional funds for the legal services contract to pay outstanding consultant and vendor invoices from previous years to account for the inflation costs impacting resources, utilities and contracts for temporary staffing and for staffing position conversions. We also worked closely with the City Council and this commission on revising and refining the city's, city council's budget policies. Since mid-year, we have embarked on a zero-based budget process which builds a new foundation for a budget document non-reliant on the historical budget practices and built from scratch for what it takes for every department to provide the services to the community that is prioritized by the City Council and the adopted strategic plan. The process has been involved and collaborative, having included all city departments, the City Council, the community and this commission. While we have learned much along the way, we realize and commit that this process is one that must begin sooner in the season so that we can alleviate any pressures of time constraints. Finance Department staff is working tirelessly on continuing to improve the document for your consideration and to reflect the policy and directives of the council and the recommendations of this commission. With so many meetings and revised documents coming out back to back, we are learning to fall into step with what is presented to commission, what is presented to the City Council, and to find a better rhythm to ensure we are all reviewing and working on the same documents. At your last commission meeting on June first, we heard you loud and clear on the areas you wanted us to explore. And these priority areas of the insurance fund of multi-year financial projections and revenues is echoed and further directed by the City Council as well. While these are not part of this budget process, staff is already queuing up the deep dive work on these areas. And we'll return to you and the City Council for study sessions and further discussion and direction in those areas as we look to the future. Now, last week, in an effort to refer the refine the accounting and numbers and ensure that we are presenting a lean and smart budget, you saw some changes to the budget document that we did not afford the commission an opportunity to review. Changes that made an a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar positive impact to fund balances. But even there, we're learning our timing and where we need to specifically call out staff recommendations for specific direction and to clearly show where those numbers are located in the document and rely less upon presentations before you. Please note that it was unintentional, not intended to misrepresent, misrepresent information or to bypass this commission. Management would like to take a moment to apologize if last week's meeting did not go as planned. We believe that you are all here to contribute to the South Pasadena that you all choose as residents and the South Pasadena that we are all here to serve. If we miss that mark or if there has been some untimely and administrative oversights in the last few weeks, we apologize and we commit to doing better. And as always, Arminia and I commit to you and to our City Council that we take your feedback to heart and make it actionable. We want to build on this product and this process with you. Last week, City Council gave specific direction on four areas. Prioritizing and funding council priorities of library master plan and multicultural event, the lighting and landscaping maintenance district, as well as returning with direction for a future discussion on analyses and options to address the structural funding issue and revenue shortfall for that item, as well as the Chamber of Commerce Improvement District funding level for this year. We also discussed the shift of the Stables Reserve Fund to its own designated fund. And staff is happy to point out where all of these changes are reflected in the document before you tonight, proposed by staff ready for council direction. Staff was also directed to take a closer look at the staffing and position requests. While the document presented reflects nine new positions and five reclassifications across the agency to meet demands and priorities following council's direction last week, we worked with each department to further specify the mission critical areas that must be resourced. And tonight, staff presents a couple of options along with financial impacts for your review and feedback. The document, as you see it tonight, will be forwarded to the city count, the document, as you see it tonight, will be forwarded to the City Council for the joint meeting of the City Council and Finance Commission next week. And will be adopted with direction from the City Council with a final budget to reflect any changes following council direction. In the event of no further staffing allocations being included as part of this budget, the document will be revised revised to reflect as such, and staff will return to council to discuss the reprioritization of projects per the strategic plan. But we appreciate your inputs on this matter tonight. Whatever discussion and recommendations are discussed tonight at commission will be transmitted to the council for next week's meeting. Finally, in the spirit of collaboration, we look forward to your discussion tonight. I'd like to take a moment to set a courteous, professional and collaborative tone and in following public meeting decorum. Chair Giuliani presides over this meeting. And there will be no tolerance of anyone speaking out of turn, outbursts, interruptions, or acts of any disrespect. Members of the public have had a chance to comment on the agenda. The Finance Department will make a brief presentation and commissioners the opportunity to ask questions, deliberate and provide feedback. In the effort of transparency and to be available for any questions, Terry Shea with Rams, our auditing firm is on the line and joining us virtually tonight. So with that, Chair Giuliani, if I may, I'd like to turn this meeting over to John Downs, interim finance director and the finance team to get into the specifics on the proposed budget document.
Dom, thank you so very much for your comments. I appreciate it. And in that same spirit of open and honest communication, after the last couple of meetings, I went back and I, I questioned what the actual role of the Finance Commission is. And I channeled my inner Gen Z and actually went online to find out. Okay. But this is, the powers and duties of the Finance Commission shall be to provide high-level oversight and advice to City Council, City Treasurer and Finance Director regarding financial matters affecting the city, including but not limited to investments, budget development and monitoring, revenue development, taxation, debt financing and internal controls. Nowhere does it say that we're auditing you. Nowhere does it say we, we direct staff. Okay, we are high-level advising and oversight. So we will continue to do that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Of course.
Chair, can I make one comment? I just wanted to say that was a really well-done apology and I thank you for that.
Stephanie, is there any way we can put those timers there for John?
I'm okay with that.
Ah, okay.
I did have my Starbucks. Well, thank you, Honorable Chair and Finance Commissioners. So tonight, we're going to go over the changes to the budget document. These changes were reflected in what is being presented for the, that were presented, I'm sorry, at the June seventh meeting. And so a few of the things in here, if I can have the presentation pulled up. Okay, please go to the next slide. So there were four changes that were included in the presentation for the June seventh meeting. The first one was basically a reclassification of one of the staff positions that was utilizing general fund monies to, to repurpose that into Prop, Proposition A monies. The purpose of that was to alleviate the general fund of the salary cost. And in a simple explanation on Proposition A monies, they're highly restricted money. So anytime you can use them, you do want to use them. So we saw this opportunity as another way to reduce the overall fiscal impact on the general fund. The second area here was the contract with the legal services was finalized. And I believe on June first, and so we wanted to incorporate that into the document that was presented on June seventh. And basically originally we had eighty or excuse me, five hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the legal services. And so that was reduced by eighty thousand dollars. And so that was also reflected. The third area was an area that we realized the senior nutrition program that we could utilize community development block grant monies for this and so that they could be partially funded by this. And so we reallocated about seventy-eight hundred dollars from the general fund, ordered CDBG funding. And then the final piece of this was it, we, we updated our revenues by about thirty-nine thousand that reflected the revenues from the senior meals based program. So the total of that was an impact to the general fund of approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in overall reductions of cost and increases in revenues. Next slide. Thank you. So at the June seventh council meeting, the City Council gave us direction on several items, one of which has to do with the lighting, landscape and maintenance district fund, which typically has not, the, the revenues have not been able to cover the cost on this fund. And so we went to the City Council and asking them for guidance on this. And one of the recommendations by staff was to perform a transfer, to recommend doing a transfer from the general fund to fund it in order to give the council time to address from a policy standpoint, how they want to fund the lighting and landscaping maintenance district. On there, there were several options put on the, on the table. However, this is going to be a, you know, fairly lengthy process. And so we wanted to give them time to do that. Another area that, that we had direction from the council was to increase the funding for the business improvement tax. And so we increased that funding by about twenty-three thousand dollars. And the additional request was to have the city fund the South Pasadena Rose Float Association Foundation for the parade. And so we were normally funding that through the business improvement tax, and it was decided at that time that the city should just fund it directly. The two other priorities that the council gave us direction on, one of them had to do with the library master plan. And so we basically were funding that. It's a CIP project, but it is funded by the general fund. And so within the transfer schedule, you will see this as an update to the transfers as well as a programmed activity within the CIP fund. That active, that activity is listed in the budget document on page fifty-two. The final request from the council or the direction from the council was to fund a multicultural event in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And you will find that noted in the budget document on page sixty-seven. Next slide. Here, one of the things in, in, so I'm going to be right out front and say I apologize that I did not have this in the prior schedule is, so we have what we refer to as the stable CIP reserve. And so from an accounting standpoint, this had a different designation than the other activities that were in the reserve fund. And so we were simply reclassifying this component from the designated reserves to assigned reserves. It's really just an accounting term, but if you were to look into the audited financial statements and the balance sheet on the general fund, you will also see it broken out this way. So it was really not to deprogram this. It was just a reclassification of this into the proper category. Next slide. And go back to that slide for a minute. I want to point one other thing out. So going forward in the budget document now, we will be breaking out the reserves this way on a go-forward basis. Next slide. So now we want to bring to you a discussion regarding personnel changes. So in our original budget as presented on June seventh, we had nine new positions included in the proposed budget. And we also had five positions that we were proposing to do reclassifications on that were going to have fiscal impacts to the cities, both its general fund and other funds. And so what we wanted to do tonight is present to you some analysis on whether we, we change that proposal from nine positions down to five and/or no new positions at all. And in addition to that, on the reclassifications of positions, changing that from reclassifying five positions down to three positions, or the alternative is reclassifying none of those positions and reflecting the fiscal impact of all three choices on both the general fund and all other funds.
John, the breakdown on those scenarios was included in our packet, correct?
That is correct. So if you go to the next slide, please. So in, in here, we're just referring to this as scenario one, but this is basically as it was presented and is currently in the proposed budget, nine new positions. And so we have, as you'll see listed out there, we have, you know, an accounting technician, we have human resource specialist, a sergeant of professional standards, we have a police clerk, administrative secretary for police, we have a principal engineer for Public Works, we have a management analyst for Public Works, we have a waters operations supervisor for Public Works, and we have one management assistant for community development. Please go to the next slide. So the total impact of those nine positions is seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, we, that's broken down between four hundred and sixty thousand for the, out of the general fund and three hundred thousand out of the other funds. Now, something I want to note when we've included these numbers within the proposed budget, we've budgeted these positions at the highest salary step. So we took a very conservative approach with these. Normally, you know, when you were hiring someone, it could be somewhere in the range and, but we wanted to be conservative with this. Next slide. So here, we're listing out the original five positions that were proposed to be reclassed. And again, these numbers are included in the current budget document as presented. So that was simply reclassing a management aide from a part-time to a full-time within the fire department, reclassifying a community improvement coordinator from part-time to full-time, reclassifying in management services, a management analyst to a senior human resource analyst, reclassifying a community services coordinator from part-time to full-time and reclassifying a management aide to management aide part-time to one full-time. And you'll see in here, here was the fiscal impact of that reclass in the general fund as it's presented to you tonight. Next slide. So what we're proposing now is, is reducing the reclassification from five positions down to three positions. And the, the two, the, the positions that would be changed would be the management services, human resource specialist, the police clerk and the administrative secretary. And I'm sorry, I misspoke here. This is, these are the positions that we're proposing to remove from the nine. So I apologize for that. Next slide. The fourth position that we're proposing to remove is the management assistant out of community development on there. Next slide, please. This is, this is how the impact will be if we change from the current status on the full-time nine recommended positions down to the five positions. It will reduce the expenditures within the general fund by two hundred and eighty-eight thousand and about thirteen thousand dollars in the other funds. Next slide. With respect to the reclassified positions, reducing it from five to three, the, the two positions that we would remove from the reclassification would be the community services coordinator in the, in the two management aide, part-time aides to one full-time. The reduction on the, the fiscal impact on the general fund would be a reduction of expenditures of approximately fifty thousand dollars and almost negligible on the non-general fund activities. Next one. Next one. This is just kind of a summary here of how the fund balances would change on the different scenarios. So in the first scenario where we have all the nine positions and we have and and we have all five reclassifications, the general fund balance ending would be seventeen points, almost seventeen point eight million. If we if we go with the recommended adjustments in there and removing the four positions and removing the two reclassifications, it would increase from the seventeen point seven nine one up to eighteen million eighty thousand. Next slide. The reclassifications as mentioned earlier would have an impact of fifty thousand. And so here, this is where you're seeing it going from seventeen seven ninety one to seventeen eight forty one. Next slide. This here is summarizing that if we remove the four positions and we remove the two reclasses, here is how the impact would be on the general fund. The fund balance would go up to eighteen eighteen point one million. Next slide. If if it is determined that the recommendation is to not approve any of the positions, the nine positions or any of the reclassifications, the fund balance would increase to eighteen point four million. And that would be the overall impact of of declining any of these recommendations within the proposed budget. Next slide. So the next steps here is really for the finance commission to make recommendations to the joint city council and the finance commission meeting on June twenty first for adoption. The review, the finance commission review calendar will also be going over for discussing future dates in there. And at this point, I want to segue into, I have our auditors on the line on Zoom. And so I want them to discuss a little bit about the insurance fund. There's been conversations on the insurance fund. So I want the, I want them to speak to you and allow the commissioners to ask them questions. So at this point, I would like to have Terry Shea, please come online.
Good evening. My name is Terry Shea.
What what question would the commission ask of Mr. Shea? Regarding the, so Terry, can you just do a brief discussion on the insurance fund and then allow the commissioners to ask any questions that they may have regarding it?
Sure. The insurance fund operates as an internal service fund, which is a proprietary type fund. And so each year, the city gets an actuarial report based on the workers' comp and the general claims liability. Excuse me, that amount is then recorded as a liability. And also in that fund, you also pay out your insurance premiums for your your various policies. Like until that the that the fund is negative. And the reason it's negative is because of the the actuarial accrued liabilities at the end of the year. So once you get that number, then any claims that you pay out during the year, you would pay against that liability. And then the next year, when you get your actuarial done again, you would either lower those expenses or increase them based on the new claim. And so your expense, basically, other than the insurance is the change between the two actuariales. And part of it is short term and part of it is long term. And we see this a lot in a lot of cities where due to that actuarial accrued liability, which has a long term component, a lot of these fun enterprise funds proprietary retained earnings or net position do go negative. And most cities will try to cover their one year costs, what they estimate to be for the insurance policies plus the current portion of any claims payable. And as long as you're covering those costs, the long term costs then would be covered at future years. It's kind of similar to CalPERS. When when the city had to record that entire liability, a lot of cities, it made their net position go negative. But it's the the actual liability is the change between the two actuariales between the two years. And the cash goes out to Pers. That's like on a on cash basis. So it's a little bit similar to that. And that's why you'll see a lot of cities have their net position negative because you have that large debt. And and we see this a lot in internal service funds for for insurance and workers' comp claims.
Now, Terry, the insurance fund actually started going negative about twenty nineteen. So prior to that, it stayed primarily positive. And then in twenty nineteen, it went to negative two hundred and fifty seven thousand and has grown over the years now to the negative one point nine, I think you put into the audit this last year. So I guess the question I'm asking is that all entirely related to the actuariales for this coming year? Or is this been kind of a growing liability that we have?
Well, the, you know, these things change a lot because a lot of different workers' comp claims and you never know about lawsuits and that. And the actual takes into account all those things. If you look at the actuarial accrued liability was two point, almost two point three million in twenty twenty two. And then the prior year was only one million seven thirty six. So there's about a five hundred thousand dollar swing there. But I've seen places where they'll say, okay, let's get that cash up. And what we'll do is we'll slowly charge maybe over the next five to ten years to build up that balance just in case. And so you could take that like one point nine million, take it over ten years and slowly start funding that. But it it changes every year due to the actuarial and that is.
Correct, but there's still, I understand that the actuarial differences, but at this point, we have both the negative position in that fund as well as we don't have reserves. We're not meeting the policy for holding our seventy percent reserves based on the actuariales. So I don't, if I'm mistaken, I it's not looking to me as though it's a matter of that's just simply on the actuariales because the reserve numbers aren't in there as well.
Yeah, I could see that, but.
I sort of, you were giving the context there and I lost the the question, the context.
Well, there are two components. So there's this negative balance in the insurance fund. But there's also a reserve that was seventy percent reserve that we're supposed to maintaining under the budget policy. So what I'm trying to understand is, are those two separate issues? So you've got the negative balance that's been building off of our liabilities versus the insurance reserve that we're supposed to be holding to be able to pay future liabilities.
Terry, do you understand the question?
Do I understand the question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I do. I I yeah, I, well, the part of the problem is the, you know, transferring the cash, right? And so the city has available reserves in the general fund to set that up and cover that.
Okay, Terry, for one second, though, that's, we have available money in the general fund, but they're not put aside as reserves for the insurance fund. And from what I understand, the policy we're supposed to actually be putting seventy percent towards reserves. So again, there are two different pieces. There's the negative balance that's currently in the insurance fund. And then there's the seventy percent reserve based off of the actuariales.
Now, seventy. Where seventy percent of the actuarial is supposed to be over in the in the in the in the internal, in the internal service fund? Is that what you're saying?
The the policy policy states that we're supposed to hold seventy percent reserves based off of the actuarial data, which is different than what I believe with this negative balances, because I don't believe the negative balance is based off of the actuariales. And that's what I think I'm trying to understand because you're saying that the negative balance is based off of the actuariales.
Yeah, I mean, if if you were, how how you get there is you credit a liability and you divvy it an expense. And and so that would cause you to go negative. Now, if you want to build up to that seventy percent, then you would obviously have to transfer more money from the various departments to build that up to seventy percent. Even if you're at seventy percent, you would still be negative. You'd be negative the thirty percent, right?
I think that I think that's where the confusion is. So I think the confusion is, is it that we're supposed to have you know, zero balance in the insurance fund and then have an additional seventy percent reserve. That that's where the the confusion for our part is because actually part of the budget policy is that we were supposed to have a a look at the actuarial policies or the actuariales themselves and the claims. So it's understanding if it's really all about the actuariales, because when I look at the insurance fund itself, you know, we we get some major things that were not actuarial based. And one of the things is that we had premiums went up from eighty four thousand in twenty one, twenty two to one point four million this last year. So that that's not an actuarial number, that's a premium situation.
Is that for the general liability and the workers' comp or both?
That was under special department. So that was, that was a premium. That was actually the premium that they put as a special department expense. They've now broken out that. They've now broken it out this year to have general liability policy to be one point one million and the workers' comp to be another four hundred fifty five thousand, which is one point five million dollars. So I guess that's where I'm there. I'm asking the question is, is the negative balance really about actuariales or is it about, you know, a significant increase in the insurance premiums as well as the claims and judgments paid?
Well, if you're not, like you said, that one point five million, if in the current budget, you're not charging the other funds plus the enterprise funds for that one point five million, then you would be negative because of that as well as the actuarial. And so usually what you would do is you'd say, okay, here's our workers' comp, which we're going to pay. And here's our insurance policies and that. So you're going to recoup those funds from the various general fund and enterprise fund departments. And so are you're saying that those weren't adequate this year to cover that insurance expense?
Well, I mean, what you've had is you've had fluctuations. And so it's not, so the insurance expenditures includes premiums and includes claims and judgments paid. As far as I understand, I'm not sure if it's actuarial or claims and judgments paid, but you've had that fluctuations there and kind of increases, substantial increases. So again, like twenty one, twenty two, you had for general liability, we went from seven hundred and forty seven the year before to two point three seven in expenditures. And you started really seeing dipping down of the insurance fund as well as, you know, then the this following year, this current year, it went to the premiums jumped significantly. Whereas on the revenue side, there's been claim reimbursements have been fairly modest. This year it's projected significantly higher. So there's been a difference between what the revenues have come in versus what the claims and judgments. It's just not clear to me if what we have expense as claims and judgments for workers' comp and general liability, are those actuarial numbers or those actually the claims that come in spent? Because from what I understand, if we have a deductible of a hundred thousand dollars per claim, even just like a, you know, bare minimum math, if you have twenty four claims right now and you have to pay deductible on each of those, that's two point four million dollars in expenditures that you will have to pay.
Right.
Based off those. So that that's where I get confused by this saying that all of the negative is associated with actuarial versus saying, okay, the actuariales are about projected claims that are going to be coming up in the future.
Well, the act the actuarial claims will give you the future and it will be short term and a long term. And so if the actual premiums for the insurance policies were one point four million or one point five million, that money would be in an expense in this fund because that has nothing to do with the claims, right? That's just the insurance.
So so eight one six one claims and judgments, general liability, are those actual expenditures that were paid out? Or were they?
It's a combination of both. See, what what should happen is you should have expense for the premiums. And then when you have your actuarial done, it takes into account the claims that are already incurred, the claims that aren't incurred. And so during the year, when you're paying those claims, you should be playing, paying against that liability. Then at the end of the next year, you get your new actuarial and then your adjustment would be if the actuarial went down or up, you would offset those expenses or you would increase those expenses to based on the actuarial. And so that that expense technically, other than the insurance premiums, should be the change in the actuarial between the two years if those claims are on there. I mean, if there's claims that weren't included in that actuarial, but you know, that's usually taken care of in the incurred but not reported section. And so you would look at your your actuarial at six thirty twenty three and six thirty twenty two. And then that difference there would be your adjustment. And then if you'd already paid off some of those claims, you should have reduced that liability during the year as you were paying those claims. So it it should always be basically the difference between the two actuariales. And and that should be your liability claim, your expenses, kind of like CalPERS, the you know, your liability, they do an actuarial twenty three in it. Well, they're behind till twenty one and twenty. And so your your actual expense for retirement is the difference in the two actuariales. What you pay monthly to CalPERS then gets adjusted either up or down depending on the on the liabilities. And then the claims and payable works pretty much the same way. And so it's kind of a combination between the both. And I can understand if you were to have this fund at zero fund balance and then had a seventy percent over in the general fund. I could see you doing that, but if you have enough cash in that fund to cover that actuarial, you're basically at a hundred percent, right? And I don't see a lot.
So if we had, so if we had, if that account was not just zero, but one point six million, is that what you're trying to say?
Let's just say if you had an actual, if you weren't negative that one million nine fifty two, let's say you were even or above, right? And so you would have, obviously you would have cash because that's really the only asset this fund has is is cash. And so you would have enough cash to cover a hundred percent of those claims. I guess then that would cover your seventy percent requirement.
Correct, but we but we don't at this point. So we have a negative balance.
I I could see not wanting to cover this all in one year and and maybe make a plan to do this over five years.
So so that, I mean, that's something I have seen on other cities, which is they have a repayment schedule and plan. And that that is something that could be considered, whether it's to pay it all out at one lump sum and kind of consider this as a we're cleaning up past issues and challenges, or it's a matter of we're now trying to schedule and get things back into repayment.
Your cash flow statements the last three years. One one year was negative, but for that fund, the cash flow has been positive. I think six thirty twenty two, you had a thirty four thousand increase in cash. And so I think what the city's been trying to do is just cover the cash that goes out in one year. I mean, you could, in your general fund, I saw they're projecting like an eighteen million dollar general fund reserve. I don't, I haven't looked at the policy for this year yet as to what most people set, you know, a certain level they want to stay at. And and you could allocate or assign even commit part of that fund balance in the general fund to cover these costs. So you could get to your seventy percent that way. Or you can increase the transfers each year by, you know, three hundred thousand a year, four hundred thousand a year until you got this fund with some cash.
So so what are the things, you know, when I went to go do this analysis, I did a look backwards to see where the general fund balance used to be. And I looked back at the actuals from six thirty twenty and the general balance and talking about the undesignedated only was twelve point nine million. And it came to the full general fund, it was nineteen million. And I looked then and said, okay, well, how did we get to this place now in this year where, you know, all of a sudden we see general fund balance from the actuals getting up to almost like nineteen million to and twenty five total when we've had very slim margins. And the reason I want to say that is because I wanted to make very clear that like when I've talked about like what we can do with the general fund balance, it's what I what I'm seeing was that there's some overstatement of the general fund balance because of the negative balances that have been occurring in these other funds. And it's not a matter of anything that's been on the fault of the the current staff. It's just kind of the chaos of the last few years with the funding. And so there was, instead of this fear of that we're moving from eighteen or nineteen million in the general fund balance, in some ways, it's just a correction and going back to where the general fund balance really was by saying, okay, these are some negative balances that we address.
Terry, didn't you say we could do that either in a lump sum or get it over a five year period? That adjustment?
Yeah, as as long, and and the commissioner is right. I mean, technically, everything. technically, everything in that internal service fund is basically related to the general fund or the enterprise fund, right, where you make your transfers over. And and you could transfer from both. You could transfer from the enterprise and you could transfer from the general fund. Um, you you could do it lump sum, you could do a transfer. And then what that would do is that would eat against your your eighteen million dollar reserve. Um, I'm not sure off the top of my head what the the council's fund balance policy states as to how many months, you know, they want, uh, how many months.
So actually, so from a fund balance position, we were actually, our minimum balance reserve is ten point nine million.
Okay.
Um, so and that that's in the undesigned only. So and and that's at a thirty percent. So it's actually a fairly conservative uh minimum fund balance. And I and I'm not stating this time whether they do it at one time or uh do a repayment plan. But I I did just want to say, because I I've heard, I've seen kind of a fear of moving from eighteen million down. And I just, let's say, I don't think it's that fear should be there because I think there's been some overstatement in that general fund balance because of because of the challenges in the fund accounting the last few years as things have been, the last five years, as things have been being cleaned up. So uh yeah, we're well above our minimum balance um in the general fund. But and and I do know that the insurance fund is also uh revenues come from water uh and sewer as well. I believe it's thirty percent from water and ten percent from sewer and then sixty percent from general fund.
Yeah, and and you can, you can up the allocation each month and say, okay, let's, but in talking to to the finance director, um what they were trying to do was cover what they think is next year's cost, right? So any anytime you add expenses and you have to make cuts, then council has to decide, okay, wh- what will we cut? You know, do we drop a position? And and so I can understand that. But if you have adequate reserves and you wanted this at seventy percent, you could work to where your your fund balances is covers at least seventy percent of those claims at any one time. And any extra money that goes into this fund, you know, if it turns out you don't need it, can always be transferred back or or paid back to the funds that it got it from.
Right. And and I guess what I'd like the council to know and one of the directions I think, not direction, but advice I'd like council to know is to not worry about eighteen million dollars going down because really just the end of uh six thirty twenty, our general fund balance was significantly lower. And it's not because we had such high um it's surpluses to be building up that balance. It's actually that there are these negatives that have been in there. So to not just focus on that eighteen million general fund because these funds are interrelated.
Thank you very much, Sheila. Uh, Terry, thank you so much. It it's helped me understand it. And you you uh described it like you would be talking to an eighth grader, and I appreciate that a lot. Okay. Uh, I do. Uh, may I ask, John, can you please come back to us at our next meeting? Uh, and make a recommendation about how you would like to or how you would recommend uh either uh uh payment plan over five years or a single, one single transfer? Or you would recommend so that we can uh subsequently go to city council after the budget is approved and make that make that recommendation known to them?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Okay.
Sure, I have a couple of follow up questions to Commissioner Rossi's. Thank you. These are great questions. And thank you, Mr. Schaefer, um helping uh work through them. And I'm not sure this this is a question for the auditor for city staff, but as to the seventy percent reserves, um, it's in our budget policy number nine. And it says our goal, the city's goal is to maintain reserves to fund its outstanding self insured liabilities at the minimum of seventy percent. I guess my question is, what does self insured liabilities refer to? Does that refer to the entire payout that we have to make first before we be seeking reimbursement? Or is that the one hundred percent per claim?
So really what that is, it's it's the accrual itself. And so if you're looking in the financial statements and you'll see um for the liabilities, you're gonna see the two point three million dollars. It's really that. So a- and the reason why I point that out is, so if you look at the fund balance overall, it's a it's a deficit of one point nine. And and what it is, is just simply we have a two point three million dollar, you know, liability and it's offset by whatever three hundred and some odd thousand dollars of cash uh to arrive at that. And and so when you're looking at this, you know, you're saying, okay, well, what is seventy percent of the two point three million? Because that is the liability component within the insurance fund um on there. So so in doing the math on that, it's approximately one point six million dollars, that calculation um on there. Um, so um Commissioner Rossi is is correct that, you know, one of the approaches you can make is you can do a transfer and make the fund whole. So that's that that is an approach um on there. It's it's really what I would do is I would offer up a a range of proposals to the commission and seek their guidance and what their recommendations are to move forward uh with that.
This has been a question for the last couple of meetings, Sean. So we appreciate if you bring that to our next meeting, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Quick follow up question on that. Um, for the outstanding liabilities, that means claims that have become probable and that you're accruing for them and not necessarily all the the whole universe of cases against the city.
That is correct. So related to the 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 accrued liability. So it's really broken down into, so there's workers' comp component of it, there's general liability, and those are broken down between short term and long term. So what they refer to as a short term, what they expect to occur within the next twelve months, uh, the long term is what they expect. It could be anywhere from, you know, three years to twenty years um in there. Um, and so it's really that long term component that's that's really driving this. Um, and the reason why I say that is, within the budget, a- and we can present this at the at the next commission meeting, is kind of a history of the activity in there as it pertains to the actuaries, what's driving that liability um in there. And some of my concerns on some of the past accounting in there that I really want to make certain that we do a really thorough analysis on that uh before I really, you know, make any kind of recommendations to the commission on there. Um, because we we've had expenditures. So when when we do the accrual, you know, we have that accrual, but we've already recorded a lot of expenditures. So therefore, the accrual really should have been offset in prior years. And it's because looking at this, I have concerns about that. And and that's really why I want to do a deep dive with this before making any kind of recommendations.
Well, then let me amend amend my request. Is thirty days or sixty days enough time for you to do that deep dive analysis?
Yes, it is.
Okay, let's make it sixty days then, and I'll give you the time you need.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I add just a quick addendum to that? As long as we're doing that, can we get the budget policy nine report about claims process amount paid and steps taken to reduce the liability?
I'm sorry, could could you repeat that? I I didn't quite hear that.
The our our policy nine, uh, the annual report about claims process amounts paid and steps taken to manage the light city's risk and liability.
Yes, that's an excellent point. Yeah, absolutely.
Breakdown of the types of cases we're seeing, how much we paid out, how much we've been reimbursed. We've asked for this a few times before, so I think it might be a good time to include that in with the mix with the.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Good call out. Thank you. Thanks. Um, is there anything else that on this particular topic? Because I I believe there's some questions about the previous uh topics and I do we need Terry on the line for the the uh any questions about the previous topic?
So Terry, you're more than welcome to stay on the line. And really, at this point, that would be the the end of the presentation. I would open it up for a commission discussions.
Right.
On there, on the budget itself, any recommendations that they would like for us to move forward to the joint joint meeting on the twenty first.
Excellent. I was I was allowing Terry to go back to his Monday night.
It's uh Terry's birthday today, so he may leave, so.
Well, you, okay, a glass of wine for all of us then. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, commissioners, what questions do you have about the initial part of John's presentation? And are any clarification needed? We were asked to make one decision you asked us to uh to uh make, and that is a to land on a recommendation regarding the staffing that we're going to make the city council, right?
Yes, so it really comes down to uh the staffing level. So we've talked about the nine positions, the recommendation. The 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 recommendations are really broken down this way. So right now, within the proposed budget, we have nine positions. Uh, is it the recommendation to to move forward with that? Or is it the recommendation to reduce it down to the proposed from nine to five? Or is the recommendation to uh uh recommend no new positions? Um, the 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 next, the next recommendation has to do with the reclassifications. Um, currently, the proposed budget has five reclassifications. Uh, there, so the choice is uh recommend those five reclassifications or uh recommend the three classifications or recommend no changes in classifications.
So it's your proposal that we bifurcate the new positions from reclassifications?
Very much, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And may I ask, uh, Dom, may I ask you a question, please? Um, you have maintained that throughout this process that you started a zero base budgeting, that every new headcount here has a specific intent to run our fair city.
Yes, sir.
So every time we cut a single headcount, we're giving up some level of service somewhere. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir. And I'd also like to say that we are, as you look at the headcount, and that discussion came up before city council last week as well. At the back of your budget document, I can't remember if it's page two thirty nine or somewhere abouts there. It shows you a historical accounting of headcount across the agency. But isn't reflected in that page or those pages is how much the agency has grown in terms of a new department, at least two new divisions, various services and priorities that have been added on over the years. So there is a resourcing need to get to that. There's also a couple of positions in there that is a return to pre pandemic levels. Uh, one specifically that comes to mind is the Office of Professional Standards and the Police Department that oversees training and policy implementation. So you can imagine the um importance and gravity of a position like that, especially for the police department.
Thank you very much. You answered my question. Any other questions for Dom while she's here? Okay, any other questions for John or or any of the other staff?
The one thing I I wanted to add, and I apologize for this, before you jump into the questions, a- at the end of this, uh, we will also be going over the commission's calendar for the remainder of the year to see if there's any changes that are requested or scheduling of dates. So I apologize for that.
Okay, that'll be about eleven thirty, John. Okay, perfect.
I think I'll move it back.
So questions about, let let's talk about the the staffing issue first, okay? Any questions for John on the staffing issue uh issue? Either the either the changes in positions or the upgrading in positions or the new position?
So I I mean, I think from my standpoint, it was always about just having the information on the staffing, the prioritization for council, because I feel like that's not really finance commission's position or place to say what kind of staffing should be done in the staffing levels.
Yeah.
It was much more about this is the information that needs to be provided to council to make better decisions. Because I don't feel like that's something that is really in our purview. It's more, do the budget documents make sense? Is there enough information for council?
Yeah. And 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 to in the in that spirit, um, do we believe that the staff has provided us with enough understanding that these, we can make a recommendation to the the city council on one level of staffing or the other?
Yes, I do. And I want to thank them for giving us this presentation here. Uh, I concur with the other commissioner uh statement here that uh it's not for us to decide what the staffing requirements are. And I I'm pleased that they presented this report and showed the changes here. And I put faith in in our city manager and the staffing here, that they they feel that they can operate their uh the city uh successfully with this uh uh scenario number two here. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd like scenario number two also. I think there's enough um concerns that we have about financial sustainability where we don't want to necessarily go all in. Although I think a case could be made for going all in and adjusting as necessary. I think scenario two kind of strikes a good balance. I think a freeze in adding positions and reclassifying. Um, I think that could actually be harmful. There are some key positions that we need, including the uh police sergeant or the um the training. And so I think that that option two strikes a good balance between those.
So both uh uh Commissioner Finley, Commissioner Helsler, when you say scenario number two, you mean for both the adjusted positions as well as the new positions, yes?
Both positions, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then could it be so that after they do the three to five year projections for revenue and expenditures, they could come back and consider the in increased staffing?
Here, here.
I do want to give them that opportunity to have that.
John, does that answer your question from this group?
It does.
Okay.
It does.
So let me restate it. We're we're recommending a scenario number two uh both from the adjustments to positions, existing positions as well as new headcount, that we were also asking you to come back to us and tell us uh when you do your three to five year uh look back and projections uh what you believe uh we could afford and what we should be considering again. And then as uh Sheila suggested, we will reopen this conversation at a later time.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Perfect. Now I'm going to have a deputy director, uh, Sue Lee, um, come up and discuss the calendar for the rest of the fiscal year, or I should say calendar year, I'm sorry.
Before we, before we do that, could I I just go ahead?
No, you first. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I I just wanted to go back to kind of the first page of your presentation. Because I I think one of the things, and really why I was hitting so hard on the insurance fund, but it's to just talk about the inner relationship between the general fund and the special revenue funds and internal service fund. So that, again, kind of getting away from this idea that we only look at the general fund balance and the unassigned and unreserved general fund balance and really kind of see things a little bit more holistically. So that we're, when we're talking about um like structural balance and whatnot, we realize, okay, if we're starting to run negative balances in these other funds, uh, then we need to be considering really, you know, how are those funds being operated in the expenditure. So one of my concerns when I saw kind of the presentation was there was movement from the general fund from expenditures to like um the return to the A fund and whatnot, but those, some of these funds have deficits, are already like have an operating deficit in there. And to be careful with that. So I think the um there are a lot of funds. So um, you know, like the pro- like Prop A has a positive fund balance. But it is, you know, starting to go into deficit spending where the the revenues coming in aren't keeping pace with the uh expenditures going out. So this is really what I want, would like to have council be aware of and understand is when it comes to some of the special revenue funds, to be careful of just looking at general fund and understand the relationship and make sure they're keeping an eye on what's happening in these other funds. And if their negative balance is increasing and if there's deficit spending increasing, because they there are interrelated.
And John, I anticipated that was going to be part of our uh the rolling five year projection you're going to create for us and present to us at all of our meetings as well as the monthly updates, yes?
That is, that is correct. So uh as we uh go through for year end, we'll be going analyzing all these funds, you know, doing a deep dive into the accounting, determining what's going on with these these negative fund balances, making recommendations for moving forward, whether it's just simply accounting cleanup or errors, or there are other fundamental problems that need to be addressed.
And and John, I will I will accept responsibility for being the least uh smart person up here. If you spend one of those, our meetings, you making that the education part of our meeting, talking about general funds or talking about the funds and how they're set up and why we need so many. I I was I was struck by the fact that sheer number of the funds we have.
Well, and there are different types of funds and each have a different kind of rules. So that that's why I was focusing on special revenue funds. Enterprise funds are supposed to be self sustaining. But then the center, you know, the special revenue funds, if there's getting negative balances, those might be things that we may also want to consider having a repayment plan or repayment schedule for to bring back up.
That would, that would be very, very helpful for me personally, as I I think as well as all of us.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, was there, were there any other decisions that we need to make uh be prior to our recommendations to city council on the twenty first?
So the only other related to the budget, no. Uh, the only other is related to uh scheduling for the rest of the calendar year for what the commission wants to do. Um, you know, to add additional meetings, to address additional topics, such as what we've discussed tonight.
Well, before we go there.
Yes.
Commissioners, anything else you want to ask Sean for?
Well, it's it's not so much a question, but I know that the council at the previous meeting, when the budget policies were passed, and really they were, because they were looking at the policies. And there was commentary in from the last budget, which I think caused some confusion, but. But the way that I understand it is in the budget packet, which is supposed to kind of be comprehensive for, you know, the average person who's looking at it to understand what's going on, you can use the policies to really go, okay, we're meeting these policies or in compliance, and if not, here's why, here's what the plan is to do. So I I think there was, it was misunderstanding over that direction or the council might have had misunderstanding over it when they made that direction. But I do think it's something to bring back when for the budget packet itself of like, you know, policy number two, are we in compliance? No, but here's the repayment plan. It kind of brings them back to this is what we're supposed to be doing. Policy number nine, no, but here's the repayment plan. Here's the plan to get it back to doing it. It kind of brings that checks and balances back into the process.
I'm sorry, I think I I agree with that approach and I think that in some cases, a plan could be doing a deep dive and then developing a plan, you know, and have kind of the flexibilities. I think some things you would need to really, there should be a plan. And other ones, like, we just don't know, and then we need to kind of look at it more carefully and come up with something.
No, and I agree because I mean, I think, for instance, even on the the issue of deficit spending, sometimes that happens, right? And there's sometimes that we're going to see like some of the recommendations and I was looking at of like, you're going to go into the general fund balances because it's something that just might have to happen, whether it's because of housing element being a million dollars or it's to clean up situations from the past years that we need to bring it back and to take away that fear of that happening and saying, oh, no, we're not in compliance. Because, you know, if we have this excess equity in the general fund that's over our minimum reserve, that's a way to balance it. It's not structurally balanced, but for the time it's it's balanced and then we can come back and have that plan.
Okay.
Yes, I'm agree with the commissioner's statements.
So you are now mandated to make us very smart about these things, John.
So the the last thing is we need, we need a recommendation from the commission tonight, whether they want to approve the budget to
Please.
to approve the budget or recommend approving the budget to the city council next Wednesday on June 21st.
I mean, the one thing is I would like to see in that kind of those specific points that in the budget, speaking to the budget policy, very specifically kind of saying, you know, like budget policy number two, but here's the plan that we're going to be working on, right? An insurance fund policy, here's the plan that we're going to be working on. Like, I would like to see that sent to the the city council so that they understand.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think we already asked you to do that, John.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make it a move to approve the budget and in particular, including option two, but the staff of the staffing recommendation, the staffing report. And also with the request that the budget is presented to city council in view of the adopted budget policies and including a plan to address any deficiencies with compliance with those policies.
I'll second that motion.
Stop. Stop. It's been, a motion has been made and seconded.
Let's do roll call. Chair Giuliani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rossi?
Yes.
Commissioner Elsner?
Yes.
Commissioner Finley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now I will have Deputy Director Su Lee come up and discuss the commission schedule for the rest of the calendar year.
Good evening, finance commissioners. Su Lee Tran, Deputy Finance Coach, Finance Director with the Finance Department. And I just want to kind of go over our finance calendar. I believe there should be a copy of it in your binder. I just kind of discuss our future dates and meeting dates that you want to meet.
Su Lee, these look like all 2023 dates.
Yes, it's for the remainder of the year.
For the remainder of the year. So we're just going between now and the first and the end of the calendar year.
Correct.
Thank you.
Chair Giuliani, could I just ask, what's not on here is the upcoming June 21st meeting that was just added as a joint meeting? I just wanted to make sure that was still on the table.
Yes, yes, like tonight's meeting and next week's meeting is not on this calendar. And this is the calendar that has been posted.
This is the calendar that the commission approved back in December 2022. So this is the calendar that's been posted on the website and what we wanted to provide just as reference for the remainder of this year.
And so these are all fourth Thursdays except for December, is that right?
Most of them, I think around our holidays, we push a little bit further up. I think the December one because we're closed on that third Thursday or fourth Thursday, I should say.
And yeah, meetings in July or?
Yes, the commission meets 10 times a year and we usually break in November and July.
Just want to say the the August meeting is the last Thursday of the month. I will be traveling that month and I don't, I don't want to be traveling on that day, August 31st. And I'm asking if we could amend the calendar to make that the fourth Thursday of the month, August 24th, please.
Any objection? Was that, would that be the 24th?
Was that August 24th, right, instead of August 31st?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good with me.
Good with me.
I would say for future years, though, like I'm in June 29th since we're having this meeting, something to consider is if we only have 10 meetings a year, I'd like to see three budget review meetings.
Absolutely.
One, one that allows us to have our first initial look at the budget, then go back and like process it, analyze it and come back with concerns, and then another one to actually like address.
Yeah, absolutely. As this has proven, some of our challenges have been, we were trying to move too fast and we had things going in parallel and they didn't really go in parallels. Yes.
Correct. And I wanted to note for the June 29th meeting, on June 28th, we actually have a commissioner of Congress. I don't know if you want to have the meeting the next day or if you want to reschedule the June 29th meeting.
I'm going to be out of town, so you guys.
I mean, we do have one, two, three meetings in June already.
Just for reference, the commission is already meeting their quota of 10 meetings. If that is of concern, we will exceed that at this rate.
Stephanie, I assure you there was no concern.
I would just like to see us kind of pick a schedule and stick to it.
Yeah.
That's that's the most important thing. June 29th, I, you know, I realize we'll be, we'll be meeting with council on the 21st. I'm kind of ambivalent about whether to do it for if Commissioner Rossi isn't here, you know.
June 29th works for me. Fine, thank you.
I can, I can do it.
Yeah, sure. I think we, let's stick with worst case scenario, we we come and we have a retire over to my Gannon's afterward, okay? Su Lee, on the 29th, I would ask, though, that you come back to us with the first half of 2024, those dates. Taking into consideration Commissioner Rossi's request that we have at least three budget review meetings scheduled far in advance. Thank you very much. And I'm assuming that we'll go through the same joint meeting with city council, so that is over and above our normal meeting, is that?
Correct.
Okay, so if you could address that date for the joint meeting with city council in June, too, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Just for planning purposes, we all have children who are graduating. We like doing fun things.
Very good.
Thank you, Su Lee. Appreciate that.
My shows, one of the things I would, I would like to ask related to whether it's the 29th or you want to extend this into, you know, July or whatever. Because you're having the commission, you're having the the meeting on the 21st, you're having the commission thing on the 28th, Congress, and then the 29th. However, in that context, the the question I would like to propose to you is what you guys would like on the next agenda so that we can prepare for it?
We'd already, we'd already given you one recommendation regarding the insurance.
Correct.
Fund, and since Mr. Rossi won't be here for the 29th, I'd like to push that off into the meeting in August, you know.
That that was my understanding, so hence the question for the 29th.
I can listen in on Zoom if you wanted to have the informational meeting on insurance or on funds.
Oh, can you, would that be possible?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll do that on the 29th.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness, by Labor Day, we'll be so smart. Okay.
Any other day changes?
That was a lot of, a lot of jockeying around. Are you, you comfortable with what we asked?
So here are the dates. So June 21st will be our joint meeting.
Right.
And then we'll have our June 29th meeting to discuss the first half of 2024 calendar, including three budget reviews. And then we'll also discuss the funds.
Right.
And then August 24th, rescheduled from August 31st, September 28th, October 26th, and December 21st.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And and staff, thank you for hearing us loud and clear about the dates. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good. That brings us to the end of our agenda.
I think there's a few more like.
Okay. City Council liaison, please.
Just once again, thank you so much for your thoughtful, thoughtful discussion and comments and and really so appreciated. Thank you.
It's our pleasure. Ed. Definitely is on. Huh? You're good? I knew you were. Ed.
Thank you to my fellow commissioners for their discussions and questions. It's been a really good process and I think that, you know, each time we do this, I learn more about our budget and so I appreciate working with all of you and also with staff and with the city council. Thank you for for working with us in the spirit of collaboration to keep making improvements to the process and to the final product, too. Thank you.
Sheila.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you to everybody for all the hard work and going through this. This is a process. It's, we've had a major cleanup to be working on and we're still working on it. And thank you for bearing with all the hard questions and pointedly, let's, let's work on things and improve. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to share a commissioner's statement about thanking fellow commissioners for the work that they've done and the contributions they made in terms of allowing us to delve deeply, more deeply into the details with regards to the budget, getting a better understanding of it and the proposals of what we want to do going in the future. And working with the Finance Division as well as as Department, as well as the City Manager, Public Works, you know, all the departments, getting a better understanding with regards to the financial aspects of their work. And it's been very beneficial to me, have a better understanding, and I think all our commissioners would say the same thing. So I want to thank everyone for helping this commission do their job well. Thank you.
And I'd like to echo all those comments and also say that we have worked through some tough times over the last three and a half, four weeks. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time and attention. Appreciate everybody leaning in. And John, I'd like to add one more thing to that educational component of our future meetings. CIP, please, do a deep dive on that and so we understand and we can manage that intelligently. So with that, at 7:38, I declare this meeting closed.